And then.
A lot.
Like a lot of this.
Good morning. It's Monday, June fourth, nine AM. So Muskegon County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to bring the meeting to order. First is to review the agenda.
Move to approve this resented.
Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next is to see comments from the public. Would anyone like to step forward and address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on. Number four, discussion of possible action to approve claims dated June fourth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of five hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
Move to approve.
Second, motion by Bob, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. Next, public hearing on proposed amendments to the FY seventeen eighteen Muskegon County budget. So we're now in a public hearing. Any?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just gonna go over, just review briefly what our budget amendment, this is our final budget amendment for the year. I think the most important thing to note is this budget amendment increases our fund balance by three hundred and eight thousand dollars. We had a couple additional grants, Board of Health and GTSB, so we have additional expenses and revenues for those. Jail expenditures increased a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Jail revenue increased six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Juvenile detention costs were higher. That number is just trying to hit a moving target. We've had years where it was very low. This year it's significantly higher than it's been, so we're amending that budget. We're amending the zoning budget for some part-time and temp help. Eric's had some staff people that have been out for a period of time, so. The auditors budget, we're amending election expenses, expenditures and revenues. And general services, jail maintenance, building and repair, we needed a little extra money there. That, that building has some age on it and we're just trying to stay on top of maintaining that, so that's, that's about it.
Is that the ninety-five jail, Sharon?
I'm sorry?
Which jail is it?
The current jail.
The, but the original edition or the, not the new edition?
Both. I mean, we just, most of it's in the original side, but we have plumbing issues, faucet, showerheads. We put the scale blaster in the, in the new part, or in the old part of the jail and that's helped that tremendously. But you have breakage, you know, an inmate decides to knock the, the sprinkler heads off and those have to be replaced and so.
Yep.
You know, it's just, just nothing, nothing real unusual, regular maintenance and repair on a building that has twenty-four seven usage. You know, with a little, little bit of age on it, so.
And with the money on the HVAC we put in, a cou- couple of years back, we're seeing those expenditures excesses and all that, problems are going away.
We, yes, but we still have some maintenance on some of those systems. Our utility costs have gone down significantly. You know, but, but we do have some maintenance on HVC, some of the, you know, with vibrations in the system, there'll be a leak that has to be repaired. Our staff are doing a lot of that, but there are parts for that.
But the old issue of running a hose on the chiller and hot days is gone and it's, and it's, the space is conditioned well and we're not having any complaints.
Now, hopefully we didn't just jinx ourselves.
Yeah.
Yes, that's been working fine.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Nope. So I would move to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, I've got a, a motion by Jeff, a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Jeff?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I vote aye. We're, public hearing is now closed. Next is discussion of possible action to approve a resolution oh-six, oh-four, one-eight, oh-one, amending the fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen budget.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jeff, second by Matt. This is a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. B is resolution oh-six, oh-four, one-eight, oh-two, FY twenty seventeen eighteen budget appropriations.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Jeff, second by Matt. This is a roll call vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
I would just note that the jail occupancy has been running pretty close to two fifty plus or minus all the time. And we've been running over a hundred feds every day for a lo- quite a while for the span of time, so helps that budget side of it pretty good.
Yeah, that federal group is pretty consistent as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, number six. Public hearing on a request from Martin G. or Sharon A. Hughesman, record owners, and Jeffrey Slitter, proposed buyer to rezone approximately forty-two acres located in Slutham Township from A-one Ag District to R-one Residential District. We're now in a public hearing.
Yeah, last month, the zoning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning request from current A-one to propose to R-one Residential District. Did you end up with a copy of the teacher land use map by chance? In fact, I don't know if I did.
It's a little hard to see if it's not zoomed in. When the color wants. They call your attention to the whole area there, circle the residence with an arrow. That's the areas proposed. As you can see, it's right in that area, which according to the comprehensive land use plans, future land use map is expected continued residential development. Directly to the east of this property is a developed subdivision already, the Mecaciba area, if you're familiar with that. This is along, has furnished the highway twenty-two east. Comprehensive plan particularly calls out that area of highway twenty-two east, Blough area, as expected continued residential development. Very low CSR of thirty-three, no tillable ground will be coming out of production. It's just really, according to our comprehensive plan, an expected development area, so the applicant in the, I believe the desire right now of the proposed buyer is just a single-family residence by the entire acreage, but because it is particularly well-suited for development, they are requesting rezoning.
Okay. Anyone want to speak for or against this?
Mr. Hughesman is here. If you have any particular questions for him, he's the property owner. But again, like I said, this one falls right within one of those areas that we expect to see, and it would, it would represent orderly, orderly development. My opinion is it's an extension from an area that's already residential.
Yeah, you could combine that with your, you have approval already. I, I'd recommend closing the public hearing.
Okay. Got a motion by Bob and a second by Matt to close the public hearing. It's a roll call vote. Bob?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Public hearing is closed. The discussion of possible action to approve an ordinance rezoning approximately forty-two acres in Slutham Township from A-one Ag District to R-one Residential District on the first of three readings.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Matt. This is.
I was just saying, I need to recuse myself. One of the parties is a client.
Um, this is a roll call vote. Bob?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And so motion passes four zero. Next is number seven items with the planning zoning administrator, Eric Furnas. A is discussion of possible action to approve resolution oh-six, oh-four, one-eight, oh-three, approval of the combined preliminary and final plan of Mulberry Meadows Family Farm.
Okay, Mulberry Meadows Family Farms has proposed one lot agricultural subdivision. If you're familiar with North Mulberry, just north of the Spangler Chapel area, the, the Smiths own that property. There's an existing farmhouse on there now that their, one of their daughters wants to remodel and, and live in and wants to just purchase the area around some of the ag buildings and the existing house. Because of the size and shape of the parcel, it, the carving off of the lot where the residence is separates that farmland into three parts, so subdivision is required. The remaining contiguous farmland on the north and the south remains protected by the land use limits of the A-one Agricultural District. It's still all zone agricultural. There's an existing house that's just being split off for the daughter to remodel and, and, and live in, so.
Got a motion by Matt?
Second.
Second by Bob. This is a roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. B, discussion of possible action to approve resolution oh-six, oh-four, one-eight, oh-four, approval of the combined preliminary and final plan of Echo, Echo addition.
Very similar circumstances. The Morrison family has a acreage out of two-hundred-sixtieth and Echo Avenue area, southwest part of the county. There, there's actually two existing farmhouses on this property because it's already two separate parcels. They're essentially reconfiguring to split off around, a little less ground around one of the farmhouses to sell it off and, and, and same thing with one of the other ones, and then the remaining contiguous farmland stays with the farm, stays actively farmed. And Doc is here representing the, the owners of that property, but again, it's just splitting off around existing buildings and the remaining farmland remains protected again by the, the land use of, of the A-one District. Everything remains zone A-one agricultural, so. No new houses, wells, septic, anything, just enables them to survey off around older existing houses.
All second.
Motion by Matt, second by Jeff. This is a roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. C is action to set a public hearing from Monday, June twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen at nine AM on a request to rezone approximately forty-four acres between Burlington Road and two-hundred-and-thirty-first Street in seventy-six Township from A-one Ag District to R-one Residential District.
Move to approve.
Motion by Jeff, second by Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. D is poss- discussion of possible direction regarding adopting provisions for the installation of telecommunications towers in Muskegon County.
On Friday, the Board of Adjustment heard a request for a special use permit for a cell, cellphone tower off Elder Avenue up by the Elder Ridge subdivision near West Liberty. But no decision was reached on that one. The request was actually tabled. One of the Board of Adjustment members asked specifically that I address the Board of Supervisors on this issue and get your feelings on adopting specific provisions for towers. Currently, telecommunications towers in the A-one District are listed as a special use permit, which means they have to go in front of the Board of Adjustment. Beyond that, we don't have any specific regulations that address how far back off the road they have to be other than the normal setback of fifty feet for the A-one zone. There's questions about tightening up, or at least strongly, being able to strongly urge companies to utilize existing towers, making them really prove that there's a burden to put a new tower up as opposed to co-locating. More and more counties have adopted regulations specific to mostly cellphone towers. Now we're starting to see some Wi-Fi towers as well around the, the county then could implement specific setback distances to those types of uses as opposed to just fifty feet for any building, because you know, some of these things are two hundred feet tall. While the engineering on them is generally very good, you hear very few stories of them collapsing or falling. It may be prudent to adopt, you know, regulations that address location of, of these types of structures. I told the Board of Adjustment that you folks would likely have me take this to the zoning commission to get a recommendation on, but they specifically wanted me to see if there was, you know, some interest in developing regulations specific to towers. One of my predecessors had begun some work on an ordinance specific to this, but from what I can tell, it, it never went anywhere as far as to the zoning commission or back to you folks. We, we currently do not have anything specific. But in my opinion, it's probably time that we look at something like this.
Didn't you do some work, Eric, on the, like, wind turbines?
We did adopt full regulations on, on, yeah, wind energy conversion systems, commercial size, you know, so if we get a request for a wind farm. So I, I wouldn't envision this being quite as detailed as that, because they are, you know, they're, they're a little less intrusive than some of those big wind turbines, but there, there's some good reasons to have some specific regulations. One of the things that happened at the meeting, the Board of Adjustment felt that, that they want, they maybe have a desire to recommend a minimum setback of at least the tower height from the county road right away. Well, the designer had already designed something a little less than that, had done the soil sample and the engineering, so he felt like, hey, this is kind of a moving target. Although the Board of Adjustment does have the ability to implement reasonable conditions upon, upon granting these, I think for the developer's sake down the road, it'd be better to have something clear cut so they know what to expect when they, you know, when they look at the different sites and proposed sites for these. So that's why the Board of Adjustment just feels like it would be helpful to them if we had some specific minimum regulations.
Yeah, and on the wind turbines, it wasn't, there's some points in there regarding the safety of our ag land and so I'd certainly like to see something like that in this.
Sure.
This proposal as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would develop something fairly comprehensive, but, you know, not overly complicated, you know, that maybe addresses staying away from the most prime farmland, or at least an attempt to utilize less than prime locate, you know, prime farmland locations, setbacks for public safety and property value, and, and certainly something that, that puts the burden on them to prove why they can't co-locate on existing towers otherwise. What's happening is some of these leases are coming up on existing cellphone towers. They're claiming maintenance costs on existing towers. Do you know, they just want to put another one essentially right across the road from an existing one.
Well, see, I noticed that this weekend, it was at Greenwood Cemetery, there are two towers there, you can almost spit on the other one. So I think it's a good idea that the Adjustment Board mentioned the fact of looking at utilizing existing towers where possible. Sometimes these guys don't want to do that, but if it, if we make it part of an ordinance, then they really want to have.
They're required by state code to provide a sworn document where they claim the reason why, or they, they show the burden, but again, it's gonna be up to local jurisdiction to weigh the validity of that claim, you know, or give it, give it its proper weight.
Wouldn't that be fall upon us, send, send the framework of the county to, for us to review that?
Certainly, certainly we'd review it, but, but you're still gonna most likely have a, have a, a case where you're going to have to determine whether their reason for wanting another location is good enough.
Sure.
You know, they, they have to provide a sworn statement, but it's just, that's all the state regs requires, is they give you a statement saying, well, we need this because it's becoming too expensive where we're at. There's no real calculation, you know, but I'm more, I'm as much concerned about maybe some proper setbacks that everybody knows what they're dealing with when they do their designs for safety and aesthetics and that type of thing, so.
How far we can make our expectations down and understand, like, that's great.
Yep. Because it is maybe considered a moving target if they designed it thinking we wanted a fifty-foot setback and then the Board of Adjustment wanted more than that and they didn't plan for it and significant engineering went in, so. That one's tabled at the Board of Adjustment. So I guess I'm looking for direction. Would you like me to take that to the zoning commission and possibly adopt some regulations, receive the zoning commission's, okay? Yep, we'll do that then.
I have one question. What was the law process, if I understood you correctly, of having the setback equal to or greater than the height of the tower? What's that law process?
That would be simply so if there was a catastrophic event where that thing falls. Now, the claim from all, from the engineering that they've, what literally provides so far is these are designed to collapse upon themselves and not fall in one section, but that's this one particular type of tower. This was a self-supporting. We still see some proposals for guide tower, you know, guy-supported towers, mono supports. So I just think it'd be better to have all played by the same rules, so no matter what type of tower, if engineering fails and it does collapse, it's not going across a road or probably power lines or somebody else's property line, that type of situation.
I understand.
I'd like to see it from the road, but also from a residence.
Well, it certainly would, because my, my idea at least would be any adjacent property lines as well, not just the road right away, but.
What are you talking about, property line?
On, on the sides and the road right away and the front.
Sure, if it's the same, same parcel.
We could, we could certainly still put in, or, any buildings or, or residences, yeah. Well, inhabited or even, what if it's a large commercial building or all confinement, or it may just be a good idea to have a fall zone around the entire tower. As long as, it's not, and it's not uncommon, I've seen some of them that it's one point five, the height of the tower. It's just, it's that they know when they do their design and start looking at potential sites, so that's what they're dealing with to be helpful.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So you got your direction there? And, uh, let's see there. He is updating information presented in the Muskegon County Levy Operations Meeting held on January eleventh, twenty eighteen, in a discussion of possible action to accept a natural valley designation for certain areas, in special flood hazard areas around Nichols Island.
Okay, I believe you all got my memo on this, just as a refresher, from January eleventh. There was a levy group outreach meeting. Jeff and I attended that. I do have one of the maps that they had provided us, just so I don't bore you here. It's all slaying. Just kind of in summary, the, the county was approached by this group, that it's a consultant, this Atkins Consulting Group, which is FEMA and the NRS consultant. The State of Iowa recently completed a bunch of new LiDAR, uh, ga- information gathering for the state, utilizing some of this updated LiDAR information, which gives them just more accurate topography of the different areas. There is gonna potentially be some boundary changes of existing floodplain boundaries. It's important to know that it's not a full engineering study, but just utilizing new topographical data could change the boundaries of some of the floodplains in certain areas. One of the areas they wanted to talk to us about was the area right around Nichols. And that was because just south of Nichols, there's a, a drainage ditch referred to as Hockey's Slough. It has what appears to be a levy, which is essentially just a spoil that was thrown up on both sides when, when, I believe it's Drainage District. Is that two Leslie? Possibly. I think it might be two. When they, when they put that drainage ditch in there, Betty and I went back and we looked at the minutes and found that, you know, found when they dug that ditch and what it cost and all that. The DNR and FEMA wanted to know if there was any interest from the community governments, in this case, Muskegon County or the city of Nichols, in having the berms on both sides considered a levy that would show flood protection along fr- from that hot Hockey's Slough area, particularly on the landward side between the Slough and Nichols. They presented what's required when you go to essentially certify a levy. And because we found this was never designed as a levy to begin with, it would be a very, are just very expensive task to ever get it certified now. They had done some elevations and estimated available and needed free boards for it. And, and estimated that as it is currently now, it shows on the floodplain, that it doesn't provide any protection. So the low areas show in the floodplain. And there's not that many areas in the town of Nichols that are, that are in the floodplain already. There's a few. Fast forward to the new LiDAR information, the map I gave you. The areas in red are areas with this new, new topographical data will now go into the floodplain, which are not, had never been shown as being in the hundred-year floodplain previously. You can see most of the red areas are out in the county, more west of highway seventy, west of Davis Avenue on the north side of highway twenty-two. This is by and large agricultural area. Very few residences would be affected by this. This is not a public hearing to take comments or determine new floodplain maps. What FEMA wants to know is if there's any interest from the Board of Supervisors and the city of Nichols in developing that burn along Hockey's Slough to, to, to develop it or improve it to the point where it could be considered a certified levy. That's all they're asking is if there's any interest in that. Jeff said. And, and that's, that's my recommendation too, when you look at what it would, what little it would actually protect as far as structures that are required to carry flood insurance compared to the cost of basically starting over. It, it just doesn't seem to make financial sense.
Yeah, there were, uh, uh, Nichols was there. I don't remember, niece, what he said, how much. But, you know, there were a couple of properties in Nichols that had been, and I think they already were. And there's a process that a homeowner can go through with their, with the elevation too to get listed. I don't remember it exactly. But clearly an example where you would never get a payback on this, because most of the ground that this is capturing, those that are familiar with the area, I hope there's not much farming activity. You see it underwater all the time anyways.
Well, you could say, there isn't, like, all you'd be doing, yet if you developed that levy further, is just be dividing the floodbars.
If they came, you're still gonna have mobiles.
Well, I think the point is that, you know, that levy, for the purpose of their map, provides no protection. It's still gonna do what it's always done. There's no change to that.
Exactly.
The only thing is because, you know, I think in our, our county engineer. The only thing is because, you know, I think in our, our county engineer would say, just because you piled some dirt up alongside of a ditch, doesn't make it a levy. And I think that's the concern here, is it's never was really designed as a levy, it's not going to provide that protection in, in certification. So, uh, the, the costs of doing that were, uh, they didn't even, I mean, they, their number, they were talking millions.
Yeah.
To, to certify it, just to certify what was there. Because they said you'd probably have to tear it apart and redo it, because it wasn't designed as a levy, so.
And so essentially, the specific question that they're asking, uh, for a response to is, is Muscatine okay with continuing down the road portraying that, I don't use the term levy, it's not, as a natural valley designation? Natural valley is just, just what it sounds, we have hills and swales, and it's no more than that on a floodplain map. It, it would really provide no more protection than just a natural high spot in the field, or sometimes the water flow around it, sometimes it goes over the top of it.
What, what's the push for having designation at all? What's the push for having, we've been dealing with this situation.
It was just something that the LiDAR showed that there's this high ridge clear along the slough, and so they want to give communities the opportunity to examine, uh, existing structures to see if they would, would benefit from improving them and certifying them as levies.
And what's your input, benefit from the Nichols designation?
Uh, Nichols, it's my understanding, it reaches the same, reaches the conclusion I think we're heading to, is that they see no benefit as well. I had a conference call with their city clerk and the FEMA consultant on, uh, Thursday or Friday, and that's where they're at as well.
Yeah, they took it to council, and, I mean, they have some, their water treatment facilities in this area, and, but it is up above the floodplain, and they were doing a couple of steps to, to certify it and to get it further, which would help, be helpful. But from a property perspective, there was nothing there protected that they saw that there was anywhere near the.
Yeah, but I'm sure they wouldn't have seen a burden on the residents of Nichols.
Right, yeah, and it didn't appear that it would do that.
No, there's, you know, there's going to be some property that shows in the floodplain now that probably will come out, just based on updated topography. The red is what they project will go in, but you can see it's by and large farm ground. Um, and at the end of my memo, later on down the road, August, September, they'll have the public hearing and comment periods on the preliminary proposed firm maps. Um, this is just simply so they can keep working towards those proposed changes, so we don't get to that spot and then you propose, or somebody would say, well, what about this levy, could that have been improved? This is just to make sure that nobody's interested in improving it, so they continue on with their new, uh, revisions to the firm maps. So, if Muscatine County is okay with, uh, the continued designation of just a natural valley for that area, then I've provided a draft letter for the chair to sign, and that's the response they're looking for, is yes or no?
And I think if, if everybody remembers the last time these firm maps were dealt with, you know, this is a much better, much improved process, I would say. You remember when we had whole sections of the county that got put into flood rates and people had flood insurance, and it was a shock to us all, I don't think we knew. So they, they had understood that they maybe didn't do that right, so now they've got this group and they're doing a much better job of reaching out, kind of showing in advance and then going through the science behind it and what the options are before we get some kind of a hand dealt to us where they take thousands of properties and throw it into a flood insurance rate area. Um, so I think it's a much better process this time, and I appreciate that they changed it.
Okay.
So, and it makes sense to me from the meeting with these guys that we just accept the natural valley designation.
Right. And we don't, we don't show it as an action item, I'm just verifying that, or it is an action. Did you want a vote off, did you expect a vote on it?
Okay, so I'll move that we, uh, re, we authorize the chair to sign the note accepting the natural valley designation.
I'll say it. Motion by Jeff, second by Bob, all in favor. I oppose, and motion passes. Eric, anything else?
I think that's about enough for one day.
I think so, thanks so much. Number eight, item of the county engineer Keith White. Morning, first is projects update.
Yeah, in the world of construction, there's really not a lot to say there. We're doing the final closeout on a lot of the projects that are out there. Uh, what's mainly been happening is, uh, on the maintenance side of the house, working on the SEOCO plans, and again, trying to coordinate that work with rag riberating right in the middle of summer. Um, we did have a maintenance letting on our pavement markings. We did have three plan holders, two bid, one we did not, uh, include, because they did not in, include the required performance bond. Vogel Traffic Services out of Orange City is our apparent low bid. Vogels associated with, uh, paint manufacturer there in Orange City. They get our work ninety-five percent of the time for considerably less than anybody else's bids. So, th- this we would propose to be sending this out to get a contract back for your approval. Questions on?
I just have a question on this, Keith, uh, when, because I, I don't understand the criteria here. Uh, when it lists quantity, what is that number designated at?
Well, the units are stations, and the stations are under feet.
Okay.
So move it over three decimals and you have feet. Which, like, so you've got, uh, thirteen thousand, no.
Two million feet.
Thirteen million feet. But. Some line feet, right, so if I had a double line, maybe two foot per foot. Well, some of it skip line too, which is still, but, uh, these are the s, the, the item numbers, the very weird looking item number over there. That's the standard DOT bid item number, and that's how they measure pavement markings or stations.
I didn't understand it.
Hundred, hundred foot units.
I'm guessing, in a given unit of road can have more than one set of pavement markings, like you have one on one side of the.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I didn't bring plans down here.
Twenty-five hundred miles worth of stuff, I'm guessing around that, and it grows, and then about six hundred and something, so.
I said I didn't bring, bring plans down, but the, um, you've got edge line, you've got center line, you've, uh, it might be WL, might be WL and skip, might be, and it's all tabulated on there.
So how's this bid, um, relate to previous year's bids?
It relates rather identically, which is considerably better than past history.
Yes, and we, the, I was expecting about a hundred and thirty thousand.
We, you know, if you look at what we budgeted, that's the number we, we've been getting a few years back. And, and we're typically on a pretty even cycle every year.
Hasn't always been Vogel either, has it?
Not always, but I would say nine out of ten times it's Vogel.
Who's the other one?
Well, the other one that didn't submit their, um, bid bond was Iowa Plains.
Okay.
They're, they're just, there never has been in my career a whole lot of people doing this, where on a larger scale, you can find a lot of people that can mark a parking lot, but, uh, in recent history, it's, I said their paint's diamond Vogel, um, they're seem to be the big player, and then the DOT does their own, with their own people and their own equipment. That's about, uh, it's about what's out there.
Well, I'm glad it's reasonable compared to previous years, because it's just something you have to do, but you don't like to have to pay more money than you have to. Are you looking for any kind of a agreement to this, or?
No, we'll, we'll, uh.
Go with it?
If, if you're good with, with that, we'll submit a contract for them, and again, we never know when they come, it's usually late in the year, that's when they show up.
Okay.
Uh, SEOCO, and we're not really ready to go out on that yet. The next, you know, we have, we'd set a, a letting that's upcoming here next week. Uh, then we, probably the next one we'll bring to you is out on G twenty-eight.
While we're doing this portion of G twenty-eight and looking at, at the boundary alignment and pausing a year, then we add at least two and a half miles to look compared to here. This had edge drains and colder perp down this way, so we have another project for edge drains and colder perp on the west, two and a half miles.
That'll probably be an action we'll bring to you to establish a letting. Questions on any of that?
No. So you're anticipating that realignment on that and work next year? Is that letting next year?
That's, well, for this fall, it will depend on getting through the right away process. That's what makes it somewhat unpredictable.
Are we making progress, or?
Well, Dennis pretty much has the, the plots ready, so we'll be.
No roadblocks yet.
No roadblocks yet.
Good.
Um, the other item, um, our road on Zachary, just north of Montpelier, is considered a dam by the DNR, because there's water impounding above. They're going to be out this week for their five-year inspection. Even though it, I think there's only maybe a couple of properties downstream from that, it gets a five-year inspection. If it should catastrophically fail, you know, who's, who's in trouble? Uh, you might remember there was a big news story a few years back when the, the one up north failed, and, and we've made the list of ones, but hers is kind of a minor thing. DNR comes out every five years, and, uh, we haven't really had any issues, so not expecting any, and they don't charge us directly for that. Of course, the taxpayer's paying for it, ultimately. Um, and then I want to mention it just because it, uh, triggered this, the tower project that Eric spoke of. The wa, it isn't just the tower folks, so, but the way they often do these things is they do everything and they do whatever they want. And then they come to us and say, well, in this case, they're setting on top of a little knob on a totally blind curve, with the driveway coming straight down to the road, which we will not allow. So they weren't going to put their tower there, well, maybe they were, maybe they'll just do it anyway and wave at us and go about their way, but. When all these people, what, towers or whatever they are, they need to be talking to us about an entrance before they just design something and say, here it is. I've tried to take that up with Eric, but, uh, I mean, this could have went through special use permit and gave them a permit, but we weren't going to give them a driveway, which I suspect would end up.
So you managed that, Eric, so they'll be getting what they want?
Yeah, but I'm just saying this occurs regularly.
Yeah, and it shouldn't.
And it shouldn't, so, I, I don't know while we're writing rules, maybe we ought to tell people they need to get an entrance permit before they go for all these other permits.
Great.
So.
It'd just be as, just as frustrating for them.
Yeah.
You don't want to be told all the time, spend all that money, they can't have reference to get to it.
Well, you put a landing strip and fly in.
Yeah, they could have just another property there.
Yeah, well, you know, the reality is, they could negotiate with the landlord of the God and come in from a safe place, but they'd have to have a lane up through his property.
Yeah, it just makes sense to drive.
So.
Well, you know, it, it, it's just, these guys do this every day, and designing these things, you would think that that would be top priority in getting the project moving forward.
Yeah, and, and that one happens to be, as mentioned, on, uh, across the road, there's a tower directly across the road. So their immediate response to Eric was, well, how do they have a driveway across the road? Because the one across the road is looking down the road this way and down, not looking into that hill that they're setting on. And then they're not in the blind, or they're outside of the blind, or, so, that's how they have one. Um, and then, big news, uh, Brian Orshowski, the assistant, uh, passed his license exam.
Very good, sounds very good.
He is a relieved young guy, I'd have that behind him.
It'd be nice if the chair sent a congratulation.
Then, I don't know if you recall, at the time that he was hired, he was hired in and as an assistant county engineer, um, with the understanding that once he passed his, his licenses, are going to be, um, promoted to assistant county engineer. Is it possible or is it worth to have, make that happen?
Very good, very good.
Anything else, Keith?
I think that's everything I have.
I have a question, and it's, it's off of our discussion right here, but, um, on Highway twenty-two, down there between, uh, Colorado Street and, uh, the Han plant, they've been doing some, uh, repair work on, taking out section, pouring new concrete, and is that just, is what they're doing there, uh, just bringing that sub up to Florida to redo that Highway twenty-two road, is, is that?
Without, i- if you look at their plans, when we finally got hold of their plans, which we requested, to see what they're doing, you know, we intersect them in about twenty places to see what they're doing there. And, you know, I looked at them, Dennis looked at them, talked to their engineer, time after time after time. And there's just all kinds of colors and stuff on there, welcome to request them from me, they're about twenty-seven megabytes or view them or whatever. Point being, it's very difficult and confusing to tell what they're, we also talked to the contractor, who also couldn't figure out what they were doing, where they intersected with us. Now, we've since mostly addressed that. Anyway, here's what I believe they're doing in most of the Portland concrete sections. They're patching, they may be diamond milling to smooth it, smooth it out. Some of them may be getting an overlay, but most of them not. Um, in the hot mix sections, they're patching and probably milling off and overlaying and widening and putting some paved shoulder out there. But, I mean, it's just color after color after color, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're doing something different here, different here, different here. I mean, probably fifty different things, the way that they're treating sections, that's because they're all, there are a whole lot of just different sections out there. So that might be simply patching and nothing else happening there, or might have additional work going.
When you say they, you mean the state?
They, the state, and, and their contractor, which is all, but, there, you know, there's just a lot going on there. So we finally, uh, you know, got information back from them on our unpaid returns, which we reviewed and commented, and went back. which we reviewed and commented and went back to them on, um. The, the last time on Highway thirty-eight north, I mean, Dennis just had to design all those returns for them, because they just don't do it. I've asked and ask what we're doing on our paved spots. And, because in our humble opinion, it's not on the plans, you talk to the contractor, they're like, we don't know what we're doing, it's not on the plans. Um, and the answer is they've given direction to their inspection, construction team to address those in the field, so. Well, I'm looking back in my consulting days where if we didn't address something on the plans, then our clients weren't happy with us, so.
Didn't you say a while back that you felt like at some point that the state was gonna turn this over to us, kind of shut it down or throw us?
Well, generically, not specifically, you know, in the past. In the distant past, they've never been able to do that and, you know, a number of years ago, I think it was two thousand and four, the legislature passed and gave them the ability to just hand things over. One-time deal, I'm going, yeah, right, so that, that, that was what you heard out of me, yeah, right, so. You, you always worried they're gonna fix this up and, and find a legislative way to give it to us.
That's what it felt like, was it preemptive?
So.
For cheating it.
Although it has not occurred again since that two thousand and four go around. Okay. But I, I'm sorry, that's not a real good answer to your question Scott.
No, that's, that's actually more answers than what I.
Than you wish you'd gotten, but.
No, no, that's fine, but.
A specific section, we can look up what their intention is there, but they're doing lots and lots of different things out there. I mean, for, for what appears to be a pretty straightforward project, it's a complex set of plans.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much Keith. Um, next, number nine, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the May twenty-first, twenty eighteen regular meeting. Second, motion by Matt, uh, or, yeah, motion by Matt, second by Jeff, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, passes. Uh, correspondence, Matt, you have anything?
No.
Jeff?
Um, probably the only thing I noticed, I did have a few letters and calls concerning the article in the journal and the corresponding, uh, letters with the fair board, uh, rejecting the West Liberty Foods offer and what all that means, so. I think I expect to hear more discussion on that.
Okay. Um, I, I had, uh, a call from a, a gentleman that, uh, lives north of Montpelier there in Rancho Valley, I believe, and, uh, he was concerned about, um, the T intersection, uh, to the north of Zachary and is it one seventy-one Keith? Is that, is that what, is that what comes across that he's in that goes west down to SSAB?
I think it's that one seventy.
Is it one seventy-one? It was that T intersection.
One hundred and seventy first street.
Once, yeah, yeah, exactly. And he was, he was concerned about the amount of, uh, uh, vehicles that, uh, uh, coming from the west, heading east, that, uh, uh, don't stop at that stop sign. And, uh, uh, he, his suggestion also is that he would like that to be a lighted intersection as well and so on. I said that I would, uh, have a conversation with yourself and, uh, uh, obviously, we've talked many times about the signage and how, uh, signage doesn't really do much unless there's enforcement that goes with it. And so, uh, I told him that I would have a conversation with CJ and see if they, if they ever do, uh, set up their control app, because, uh, this gentleman says it happens very frequently as far as stop signs being run and high speeds going through that intersection, so. That was all I had. Nathan, you have anything?
Just had a couple of folks, uh, contacting about assistance in working with some of the, uh, the mental health and, uh, judicial correctional services, things that we offer all through the region and in the county.
Bob, you have anything?
I had some questions on hog confinement for a farmer, talked to him about that a little bit.
Nothing, nothing drastic with it, so, uh, that's all I had. Okay, um, committee reports, anything on, Nathan?
Let's see, uh, nothing last week, but since last week of Memorial Day, I had a few things with prior week. On May twenty-first, we had a regular, um, Eastern Highway Mental Health, uh, Board Meeting. Renewed a few contracts, a lot of, you know, standard work. On May twenty-second, we had, uh, also for the Reach to Mental Health Region, we had a work session to go over one-time funding requests. As you may recall, um, under the previous regime of legislation that was put through, uh, Des Moines, we were required to spend down this region, um, a rather sizable budget balance. And one of the ways that we looked to do that was to entertain one-time funding requests. Um, I expressed frustration at the session, um, not only because the legislative regime has now changed and we're no longer in a position to be able to spend down that budget, when in contrary, we've been given a new mandate, you said, no money to deal with him. Um, but, uh, the, a lot of the folks submitting requests, they didn't seem to understand the concept of one-time requests. I don't view personnel as a one-time funding request generally speaking. Um, there was also a stipulation there would be no money for capital equipment requests and we got a couple hundred thousand dollars in capital equipment requests, so. Um, you know, I, I, on the one hand, I suppose you can't blame folks for trying, but, um, it was an interesting session. Uh, on May twenty-third, we had by state regional commission and had an interesting presentation on the census and how, um, the area is preparing for the census. Uh, I got the sense that, uh, there was some politics debate going into it, but nobody was really willing to talk about it. Um, but it was interesting, so that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had on May twenty-third, I had by state as well. And on June the, uh, first, um, I met with the, uh, uh, the assessor's office and discussed the compensation package there, that's all I had. Jeff?
Uh, on the twenty-fourth, I had the West Liberty Economic Development Meeting. Uh, I mentioned some of the, you know, uh, consumed by the comments with the West Liberty Foods situation. A lot of good things also going on in West Liberty, a lot of other activity, I think that, so, I think the fair, the downtown, they're rolling along pretty well. I think the grant, the CBG grant application is either in or was gonna be within the next week or two. And the consultant doing it said one of the strongest grant applications he's seen, so he thought it was gonna be, you know, felt really good about it. And then on the twenty, is it eighth, was it, thirty-first it was? Uh, I had the Muscom Joint Communications Commission. We met to, uh, approve the hiring of a, a new manager, Beverly Griffith. Was, uh, hired recently by the commission, she was planning to start June sixth, I believe, uh, Nancy. And so that's moving, I look forward to her, she brings a lot of experience and background and dispatch. And, uh, I think we look forward to, uh, getting that situation back, kind of even keel and running forward, so. Get a chance, hopefully she'll get in, meet everybody here, she comes on board.
That's it, very good, Matt?
Yeah, uh, I apologize, I, on May twenty-fourth, we were supposed to have a solid waste commission meeting and it was, uh, forced to cancel again because of lack of quorum. Um, that's the second time this year, uh, that Rancho County's got to that. Um, usually it's the same, the same people that are there, uh.
County and city?
County, city and West Liberty. Um, and then the, the new mayor Stockton, um, usually is the fourth, uh, to make our quorum. Um, for one reason or another, he wasn't able to make it. Um, in three or four years, I have not seen the mayor of Colesville or Nichols. Um, and it's frustrating.
Well, you probably have to do what we did with.
Is that a quorum you mean?
Yes, it's.
Yeah, you need to reach out to these guys and try to force it, because otherwise you'd never get.
I was on that board for a couple of years as well, and I don't, I mean, we just, you could never get a quorum. It would be either, it was always, I mean, it was surprising then, uh, West Liberty was spotty on their participation. Fruitland was always there, uh, Musk, City of Muscatine did a good job there and then Muscatine County. So we typically had the three, and I never, what quorum, is it four?
Yeah, we needed four and Fruitland was, uh, was always a solid, um, but since, uh, they've changed mayors, that's.
He's gone a lot, the new mayor's gone a lot.
Yeah, he travels.
Was always there, so he was, so that's, that's a.
Another challenge.
Another challenge, um, like I said, Nichols, Colesville, never seen them, West Liberty, uh, that's always, uh.
You said Colesville was one of them?
Yeah.
Because, uh, you know, we had issues over the many years of him not coming to a particular group I was on. But once, once we got him coming, once I contacted him to the point of.
Well, I do contact these people.
Now I come pretty regularly.
Right, and especially, uh, well, and Nichols, and I always get a letter back from City Hall, uh, an email. Cause I, I email, Christie, Christie Corby, uh, was the interim manager down there and she, she took care of, uh, minutes and, and meetings and stuff like that. Since her retirement, uh, being the chair of that board, I send out emails and even in the day of the meeting, send out emails to make sure that we're gonna have a quorum. Um, and so, yeah, it's, it's a little frustrating, but.
You just take the solid waste, you can't decide what to do with, put it next to whoever.
True, that's where that was going.
Nathan, you're so helpful.
I try, yeah, I try, so.
Yeah. Well, again, it's, it's another, you know, I don't know what we can, um, that might be something, suggestion, maybe to look at the bylaws of the commission and see if there's things we can do, um, to change the organization.
Yeah, well, the, the sad part is, is in the last few years, we've really got that changed around. We have a new cell open out there, cell fires open out there, uh, our budget's doing fairly well, um.
I mean, that's.
We're not getting ding from the DNR, you know? Yeah, it's piddly stuff like a piece of paper blowing against the fence or a tiny tree here, you know, on our reports. It's not, it's not like it has been in the past, so, I mean, this is a, it's kind of a, a breezy commission to sit on, but we, we can't make any decisions without a quorum, so.
And that, that's a county commission, correct Nancy?
Yeah, but it's.
And the city, we, well, we, we hire the city to manage, so, but it's technically our committee.
I, and, I, I think it's actually a, a separate.
Is there a twenty-eighty?
Yeah.
There is, but we hired, the city is hired to, to oversee it, but the, the commission itself holds the licensing certificate.
Hmm.
So.
Well, it looks like it's time to look at the twenty-eighty and see what can be done, because if it, if we can't get a quorum, you just can't go out like that, because you have a lot of decisions to make.
Important, so.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of.
And that carries a huge liability.
Well, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of new members on the, on that committee now. And so, you know, there's only a couple of us that probably really know what's going on out there and can't educate any of the other members if you don't ever meet them.
And, and you can't go by that thought process of, well, the city's managing it and therefore, you know, at least it's being taken care of. Because if you wanna go look at it that way, over the, all the years that I've been in and out of that thing, the city just, you know, they're constant fighting the state or the DNR constantly and all the things, Matt, are not little things. Maybe some of the recent ones were, but some are bad news.
Right, one.
And they, and they're always in court, they're always arguing, they're always, you know how they're, they do. They, you know, they've never seen a bad fight, they love it.
Well, there's.
They're just in the middle of stuff all the time.
You know, there's been the testing out there on the, uh, the wall testing and, uh, I think that's ongoing, but it's been a lot better.
Well, they had a lot of leakage for a while, they had to put down some new underlayment and they're just, then they had that whole thing where they dumped a bunch of logs and stuff out there, which are not acceptable. It's just one thing after another, then it goes to a big fight, sometimes it ends up in court, you know, they get their hands slapped and then turn right around, all this costs money and all this really messes with the integrity of the city and the county in relationship to the region, it's, it's just not good. So it'd be better if you could really, if the dog was wagging the tail and you could get the people to come.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty easy though, you think, well, they're taking care of it.
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, they're taking care of it.
But that was all I had.
That's all I have, okay. Um, I just have one other thing I wanna mention, Saturday was the weekend of the fair. And, uh, um, they ended up getting very nice weather for that event, really got lucky and, and as far as I was concerned and, uh, they were calling for a pretty substantial chance of rain later in the, late afternoon and evening, it never developed. And, and, uh, by having a, uh, some entertainment after the auctions and, uh, dinners and, and, uh, food that's served and so on, um, my wife comments, she said, uh, uh, this is by far and away the most people I've ever seen at this event. And, uh, I don't know how that correlates into dollars, but, uh, cause I don't have any of that information, but, uh, the, the, the weather was, was good, we had, uh, a, a, a nice, uh, nice crowd, uh, at the, at the dinner. And, uh, uh, so I'll be interested to see what the, uh, what the rent for numbers on that, so.
Very good.
Okay, well, moving on then, uh, number twelve is receive information from county employees. Do we have any other information from county employees that would need to be discussed? Uh, thirteen, items with the administration office. A is discussion of possible action to approve a hiring request for a sergeant at the Muscatine County Jail.
Um, the, the jail's currently short on one sergeant, um, does this still, still satisfy this promotion of the person who's currently in corporal? So it follows the usual progression.
Okay.
I have a move to approve.
Sorry. Motion by Jeff, second by Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Uh, B, action to appoint two board supervisors members to negotiate the FY eighteen, nineteen salary with the county engineer. Um. Would anyone like to volunteer for this?
Sure.
I'd be happy to, Jeff. Okay, so.
So move you two.
Okay, yeah. I have, I got a motion by Nathan and a second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Um, C, action to accept, uh, May twenty-eighteen payroll plan. Kind of motion second, second by Jeff, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes. Um, Nancy, anything else?
Uh, just a couple of reminders for you that, um, next week we will have Thursday of the campus for the primary, and it's all, uh, manning. So I, I'll be straight forward, I'm here. And that, and we have the in-depth facility planning session scheduled for one and twentieth, um, from one to three thirty, yeah.
Okay. From one to three thirty, is that what you said?
Twenty. Twenty.
Okay.
For this twelve, I will not be able to do, for this twentieth.
I won't either, but I could try to change something so I can make the twentys, see where I can get that.
I have a trial scheduled that day, but I'm almost certain it's not going to happen, so.
I'll be here on the twelfth.
Well, I'll be gone on the twelfth as well, I'll be-
I will be here.
Well, if worst of the worst, I'm the courthouse, I'll run over.
Won't take long.
Yes.
Let's see.
Just give me over to the judge.
But do we have a final date? Is it the twentieth or the twelfth? What, what are we?
Twelfth is the day, is for the canvas of the election, nine AM.
Is there a reason we do the canvas, it has to be a week after?
It has to be the Monday or Tuesday, after the problem with the Monday is they have till noon on that, they get the stuff here, and if there, if something does come in, we have to count, then we have to get the board and count it, then we, we have to get city waiting for everything to get down. So we, that's why we started doing it on Tuesday, because that gives, gives more time.
Okay, so Bob, the canvas is on the twelfth?
Yeah, and, I, I'm, right now I can't make it, and I'll see.
The planning session is on the twentieth.
Okay.
And that you can make that?
Well, I'll have to see if I can get things, it's just the way the meetings fall. Yeah, I can, I can make it on the twelfth, but it, 'cause I know it'll be very, very short, I have to, I have to be gone before ten, but I know we'll do that. Long for that. Um, so, I'm good to go.
Yeah, I heard everybody go on the boat tomorrow.
I'm still not making twelve to the twentieth that long.
So we'll go back to the twelfth.
Okay, um, so we got, okay, so the twelfth, so it looks like we're okay.
I'll give you ninety-five percent probability of me there.
Well, you've got three guys for sure, right?
No, we have two.
No, we don't, we have two.
Plus a maybe on Nathan, well, pretty good chance.
And I'll be able to let you know if somebody's ahead of time if I'm not gonna be there.
Is there a different time that-
I mean, I can do it at a different time, that would help.
Eight o'clock?
Yeah, I can do that. We can do it at eight, if you guys can be here. There's nothing even published yet on this, as to when it is, so it'd be a-
I can be here at eight, I can be here at seven, I can be here at six, doesn't matter.
Well, it is a public canvas, you wanna make it at a time.
Eight would, eight would give me a definite.
Will you do it at eight?
All right, we'll do it at-
Eight or three or two, it doesn't matter to me.
She was asking for actually Jeff.
We'll do it at eight on the twelfth.
Okay, so then we got three for sure. Okay.
Well, I already had it down for eight, so I'm good to go.
Aren't you proud?
Carmack. Carmack.
Okay. Anything else? Is that everything, Nancy? All right, well, with that, um, we will have a, a, uh, uh, five-minute recess before we go into the post-session, and we will reconvene at, uh, ten fifteen.